Would you call the roll, please?
Yes.
Ms. Shaqky?
Yes.
Mr. Holden?
Yes.
Mr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Ms. Polino? Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
Mr. Scormerow?
Yes. This meeting will be recorded and may be televised live. If you would please rise for the pleasure of the room. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item on the agenda is Ms. Rosemary McCarthy.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak today. I just wanted to report to you about a very successful STEM program that we had this summer called Camp Invention. It was a week-long day experience for students who would be going into first grade through sixth grade. And it is a true STEM camp where the boys and girls needed to use science, technology, engineering, and math throughout the day. And they did -- they sent us from Camp Invention the most amazing activities that were really engaging, true engineering and design projects. We had children whose brothers and sisters came with them on day one to drop off the sibling, and they saw how much fun they had that the parents registered the other siblings the next day.
That's great.
It was really good. It's a program from the National Inventors Hall of Fame, and part of the program, other than a lot of hands-on engineering and design, is learning about what patents are and how to handle your invention, how to apply for a pattern, who engineers are, who designers are. It was really successful. We had close to 30 participants this year, and we're hoping that we can have at least that next year. We had students from Winthrop and Revere, so we're hoping maybe to canvas out a little broader and have a -- be able to run a few more sections of it. Lexington runs one section every week, eight weeks all through the summer, and on some weeks they have two camps going simultaneously. And several of the students that we had had previously attended in Lexington and were really happy that there was a Camp Invention closer to home. There is a middle school component for this as well, and there is also a high school component, too. They already have up the curriculum for 2016. The kids will be making miniature robots. They will be designing water parks. Last year, they designed carts that had to go through an obstacle course, and the participants had to be able to get in and out of the cart and perform small tasks, and they were timed. They designed computer games. They designed electric circuits. It's very, very busy. It's hands-on. It's active, and I hope that we could have the support to try to run it again next year. A lot will depend on how we -- things work out with the new school building and what will be open and what will be closed. We don't know that quite yet, but hopefully we'll be able to run it again. And really, a lot of thanks needs to go to Ryan Harity, Frank Woods, and our custodians who -- it was a very tense time of year. It was very -- we couldn't get a date in the spring, so we had to go very close to the beginning of the school year. And of course, that was a time when there was construction going on in the building and teachers needing to come in and get ready. But once we got -- we hit the ground running, it went very, very smoothly, and we had, no pun intended, lots of happy campers. So, thank you.
That's great.
Ms. McCarthy, you ran it at the Cummings School?
We ran it at the Cummings.
Whereabouts in the building was it?
We ran it in two classrooms. We had Ms. Patel, seventh-grade science teacher, and Mrs. Silverman, fourth-grade teacher. They each ran a section. I directed and gave breaks, ran the lunches. We also used the gymnasium, and we used outside. One thing that they had to do is they had to design shields to shield themselves in water balloon fights, which was just fabulous because the temperatures were in the high 80s on those days. So, it was just great for the kids to get out and, you know, have some fun and get wet, and that was an awful lot of fun. So, one day was raining. We had to have the obstacle course inside the gym, so.
Questions for Ms. McCarthy? Yes.
Rosemary, so the maximum potential of one camp, is there -- is around 30? Is that what you said?
Is around 30. They like to have, I think, 32 in order to get four instructors. We started off with 24, so we were afforded two instructors plus the director. But then we had an increase in enrollment right after the camp started, immediately, so.
And how much is it -- how much was it for each child to attend?
It's $250.
Okay.
$249. If you register early, it's $230. If you have a sibling, it's even less. And if you work the camp, if you're a teacher with stu -- children who attend the camp, that's a little bit less, too, so.
So, potentially, though, you could have eight weeks of this camp?
Potentially, if you have, yeah.
And could -- and let's just say, is every week different projects or it is the same project for each week?
It would be a different set of students each week.
No, I understand that.
So, you would not come if you signed up your fourth grader, your fourth grader would attend for one week, not -- every summer is its own curriculum. They don't have a separate curriculum for eight different weeks.
That's what I wanted to know. So, potentially, you would only sign up for one week?
Yes.
Because the other week is repeating itself for each --
Yes.
-- week that comes by.
And it was a benefit for us, too, because we got to keep an awful lot of the materials that they sent us.
Oh, great.
One of the things that they did was, it's called tinkering, and they devote one hour of the day, and the kids bring in machines with power cords cut, no batteries inside, no capacitators, nothing that can, you know, cause an electric shock. And they spread out tools on the table, and they give the kids goggles, and the kids take apart the machines.
Wow.
And they used the parts of the machines to design their computer video game. And next year, they will use the fans and the things that they take out to hook up to their robots, so they'll be able to actually power up many of the things that they take out of the machines.
That's great.
It's really, I'm telling you, you could hear a pin drop. It was just fascinating for them to just, like, tear the stuff apart.
Yeah.
And they learned the names of the tools, which is part of our STEM curriculum here in the school. It was just an absolutely wonderful experience, and I really hope we can run it again.
Yeah, thank you, Rose, and I'm glad that you headed it, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you to Frank and Ryan and Brian and the custodians, and I thank everyone.
If I might, I'd like to just add that Rosemary's being kind of -- she's being a little bit humble.
Yes.
When we decided to do this, I had met with the people from Camp Invention. They needed a director, and I spoke with Rosemary and asked if she'd take it on, and she said she would. But from that point on, being a new program, I mean, this was a ground-up effort of her speaking to the students at the Fort Banks and going to Revere to speak to students over there and going over to East Boston and making sure that every school in the area had the flyers that went within, making those contacts with the principals. So, you know, I really want to thank her for her efforts.
Yeah.
Because, you know, we -- and I also want to thank the people from Camp Invention because when we had 24 and we needed 32, I think it was 35, and Rosemary had said to me, and she sent -- CC'd me on the email. She said, "I don't think we're going to have the numbers. I just, I feel badly, but I don't think we're going to have the numbers." Camp Invention people said, "No, you're running it. We'll run it with the 24. We want this."
Oh, wow, that's great.
They're a nonprofit.
Okay.
They're a nonprofit, and their whole idea is they want STEM education throughout the summer for these kids at that early age. And to their credit, they said, "No, no, we'll run the program," and I was very happy to hear that. And as it turns out, like she said, the last day or two, it just sort of -- and I think the word is out now, and I think we'll have a -- we'll definitely have at least one next year.
That's great. Great. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCarthy.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming. Next is public comment. No public comment? Very good. Next are the minutes from October 19th, 2015 for approval.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Perrin to approve the minutes. Second by President Gill. Any questions or comments on the minutes? Will both, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Extentions. Mr. Holden abstains. Next is the Arthur T. Cummings School presentation with Mr. Harity. Mr. Harity is the principal of the Cummings School.
Take a second to load this up.
You mean he kept the good one for himself?
Yeah. Good one's in my office.
Mr. Crumb.
Give you instructions with it, right?
That's to make him look good.
I know Mr. Crumb is actually --
He'd be nervous up here.
He's actually a generous man.
Yeah.
Our kid went to his house on Halloween, and they did all right there.
Pink-sized candy bars.
Yeah. So, that house must be down to twenty?
So, first, I just want to thank everyone for an opportunity to come speak to you tonight and share some of the things that we're doing at the Arthur T. Cummings School. I think we have a lot of positive things to celebrate. We have some things that we're obviously still working on and some areas that we need to target for improvement, but overall, I think, you know, we're really headed in the right direction. I asked Mr. Messero if we could change this from an MCAS presentation to a data presentation, so I hope you don't mind that, because for me, the MCAS is just one small little snapshot into our school. It's just, you know, it's a two-day assessment, and it's really a summative assessment, which only looks into a couple of different things and it tests on grade-level standards. So, what I'm hoping to do tonight is really give you a comprehensive view of all our students and show you some of the different various data tools we use in our school to benchmark our students and find out exactly where they're at, exactly what supports they need, so that when we go into the MCAS, we pretty much know exactly how we're going to, you know, to do on that assessment. So, first, I just wanted to start with this slide. This past week, I had an opportunity to go to the DESE Summit that the Department of Ed puts on something every year where they gather about 1,000 educators and they talk about different things that, you know, different programs that are being implemented. And Mr. Messero took the leadership team down there. And one of the schools that was showcased was a school that went into level three status, and they were starting to make a lot of progress. And so, they wanted to kind of demonstrate, you know, what is the school doing to make the gains that they're making? And one of the things that really struck me was this mentality of the school is everyone's a crew member, not a passenger. So, we're all in this together. And, you know, really, this -- tonight is really a nice sign of that we have town council members here, we have the other administrators, the school committee has been really supportive, I think. You know, this is something, we're all in this together, and for us to really move our district forward, it has to be a team effort. So, tonight, what I'd like to talk about is give you a quick overview of the school, some demographic data, talk about the data tools we use at the ATC, talk about our local literacy data from last year, our local math data from this year. You'll see we have a new tool for monitoring our students. And then, we'll show you the MCAS data from last spring and talk about our action steps and our school improvement plan. So, our school overview, at the beginning of September 2014, we had about 613 kids. That number stayed consistent throughout the year. This year, we had a slight rise. We have about 619 kids. And looking at our subgroup data, we have a percentage of students in 2013, 14 was about 20.1 percent. In 2014, it's 20.1 percent. And then last year, you'll see that we had a decrease down to 18.6 percent, which is a sign of a healthy school culture when your special ed numbers are decreasing. Economically disadvantaged, this is a new subcategory that the DESE has labeled formerly known as low income. You'll see our low-income numbers have stayed pretty consistent, maybe a slight rise. And then our limited English proficient students, we've had a slight increase there, went down a little bit in 2014, 15, and then this year, we're up to about 12.2 percent. Our attendance rate, you'll see in 2013, 14 was at 95.8 percent. 2014, 15, about 95.8 percent. What I think is interesting to note here is that we added grades six and seven in our school. And as students go up through the school system, typically, the attendance data goes down. And so, for us to maintain the 95.8 percent, I think, was pretty good. If you talk to Mr. Curley, one of his professional goals last year was really to boost our attendance. Every day, he did a big data graph and put it in the cafeteria and really encouraged the kids, really showcased which grade has the best attendance today, and really made that a really strong point. So, Mr. Curley did a great job with that. This year so far, we have 97.8 percent. That's just in September and October. If we could maintain that number throughout the year, it would be tremendous. So, a schedule overview, I just wanted to give you, you know, this is more for you to look at in depth if you want to later, but I just wanted to give you some key changes that we made to our master schedule. You'll see in grade four, we have math from 8:30 in the morning until 10:00 a.m. Formerly, we had math in the afternoon, and it was broken up with lunch. Now, we have 90 minutes of direct instruction for math right in the morning when the kids come in. I think this is a -- I think this is a good change. And then you'll see right there, 10 to 10:48, we have writer's workshop. So, last year, we had 30 minutes for writing, and there was no program, there was no philosophy on writing. Every teacher was doing something a little bit differently. Now, we have a real consistent approach, which is our writer's workshop model. In grade five, you'll see that math is also in the morning from 10:45 to 12:15. That was something that previously the schedule had a half an hour of math and then lunch and then 60 minutes of math. And that, we found, was really tough for the kids to break up their math block, go to lunch, come back. The transition time, I think, really hurt us. So, this year, I think the 90 minutes of direct instruction is going to be a big plus for us. Also, in grade five, we have the writer's workshop. In grade six and in grade seven, you'll see that our core subject areas are 60 minutes in length. Two years ago, when I was at the middle school, our subject areas were about 52 minutes. And so, now, we got those up to about 60 minutes, and eight minutes doesn't really seem like a huge increase, but over the course of the year, you're talking about hours and hours of additional instructional time, so I think that this is a good move for us. At the end of the day, you'll see we have something called ICE Block. Our ICE Block runs from 2:00 to 2:45, and ICE stands for Intervention, Challenge, and Exploration. What that means is if a student needs additional work in literacy, they get -- they go into a group called Lit Lab. In a Lit Lab, it's a group of about six to eight students that are joined. They go into this group based on the specific skill that they need. So, if the students need work on comprehension, they all go into the small comprehension group. If they need work on decoding, if they need work on the higher end of comprehension, the students are all grouped affordingly, so it's really skill-specific, and we really saw a lot of gains from that last year. Now, if they don't need literacy help, but they need math help, they go into our Chrome Math class. Our Chrome Math class, the students are on the Chromebooks, they're using Khan Academy, they're using Ten Marks, they're using a lot of these programs that we've really seen some good data jumps from, and so we wanted to make sure the kids had the time on learning on these devices. And if they don't need an intervention, then we've added some pretty exciting programs. We have Japanese history. We had -- last year, we had a personal finance class. We have a computer programming coding class. We have a STEM class. We have a creative writing class and a critical and creative thinking class. So, those are some of the different enrichment activities we offer kids at the end of the day that are all very specific and targeted. But that is more of a project-based time where it's not really focused on grades, but it's more focused on projects and getting the kids exposed to a lot of different things. So, before we dive into the numbers, I just wanted to show this picture because our kids, there's some things that you're not going to see in the numbers. What you're not going to see in the numbers is that last week, our kids raised $450 to buy socks for homeless people by donating $2 on Friday. You're not going to see that we have over 100 kids in band, that we have 100 kids in drama, that we have an amazing intramurals program, that we have the girls' hockey team won the state championship, I believe it was the U-9 or U-10 girls' last year. Those are things you're not going to see here that are a part of our community and what makes our school in our district so incredible. So, you know, now, we'll dive into the numbers, but I did want to just start with that. So, the data tools that we use, I'll just go over these pretty quickly. The DIBELS is something we use to measure fluency. Fluency is how well a student reads text accurately and the speed at which they read the text. So, it has nothing to do with comprehension. It has nothing to do with if they understand what they're reading. It's just are they reading the words correctly and are they reading them at a good speed? The Scholastic Reading Inventory is a comprehension assessment, and that is a computer-adapted assessment. So, when students take this, if they get a question wrong, it gets a little bit easier. If they get a question right, it gets a little bit harder, and it actually meets them where they're at. And so, we -- every single student has a Lexile level. From their Lexile level, they know which books they can choose, they set goals for themselves, and they really try to move forward every single year. And it's a great way to say, you know, look how much you've grown, look what you've done. And even our highest-performing students, they know their Lexile levels, and they're really pushing themselves to, you know, achieve more and more, which is nice. The Scholastic Math Inventory is something new that we've added this year for grade four and five and also some students in grade six and seven. The -- we call it SMI. SMI has a fluency screener. It gives students some -- and you can tell me if I'm giving you too much detail or not enough detail. Am I giving you guys too much?
No.
Or is this okay?
All right.
I don't want to put you to sleep here, but I do want you to know kind of what we're doing. So, and you guys are all wishing that I just did the MCAS presentation. But the SMI, basically, it gives them an addition screener and a multiplication screener. And so, the students are, you know, they -- it'll say three post-blank equals 12, and they have to put in the box what the number is. If they do that within five seconds, it's determined that they're fluent. If they don't do it within that time or they put in the wrong number, then it determines that they're not fluent yet. And so, every time the students take this assessment, just with the SRI, we're going to give it two and three times a year, and that way, it allows us to really measure throughout the year if they're making the progress that we want to see. And then it goes on to the standard mastery. So, after they're determined fluent, the next time they'll take it, it won't ask them the multiplication questions, but it will start asking them questions that are aligned with the grade-level standards. And if they get them wrong, once again, it'll make it a little bit easier. If they get them right, it makes it a little bit harder, and it allows -- it gives our teachers a lot of information about exactly where the kids are at. We also do monthly math assessments. We did one today. We have chapter tests and quizzes, and obviously, we have the MCAS, which is a summative assessment of all our programs. So, here, this is just a look into our fluency data. So, with our fluency data, we use something called DIBELS. And this is our grade three and our grade four from last year. So, this was -- well, this is grade four from last year. So, that's when they were in grade three on the left, and on the right, you can see when they were in grade four. So, what you'll see is, starting at the beginning of grade four, we had -- it's kind of hard to see, but you'll see that we had 13 percent in the well-below-average category. Starting in the spring of 2015, that number was cut down to 8 percent. You can see in fall 2013, we had 11 percent in the well-above-average category, and by spring 2015, that number doubled to 22 percent. This is our current grade five numbers. So, you'll see that we have about 7 percent in the well-below-average category, and we have 14 percent in the well-above-average category. So, in those categories where it's green, blue, and white or gray, we want about 80 percent. That's our goal, to get 80 percent in those categories. So, we do have a little bit of work to do there, but we're on our way. This is our current grade six, so this was when they were in grade five. And this is how they did when they were in grade three, grade four, and grade five. So, you'll see when they were in grade three, the fall of 2012, that's when we really started to look a lot more at data, I believe. I think Ms. Pearson could probably comment on that a little bit, but in fall of 2012, the school really started to learn how to look at data and how to take DIBELS a little bit better and how to use the SRI. Let's see, we started with 18 percent. Now, that number in grade five is down to 6 percent. This is a longitudinal analysis, so you'll see that this was our grade five, and this was just our last year's grade five. So, you'll see that, well, this is grade -- I'm sorry. This is grade five 2013, grade five 2014, and grade five 2015. So, this is our current grade six, grade seven, and grade eight. So, this is their literacy data over that time span. So, you can see, in 2013 to 2015, we've made really big gains as far as reducing the amount of students in our well-below-average category. So, this is our SRI data. This is our comprehension test. So, this measures, do students understand what they're reading? And this is our current grade five, so this is last year's data. You'll see at the beginning of last year, we had 22 students in the advanced category. At the end of the year, we had 38 students in the advanced category. We had 35 students in the below-basic category, and at the end of the year, we had 15 in the below-basic category. The current grade six, so last year's grade five data, you'll see that we had 29 students started the year in advanced and ended the year with 52 advanced. You'll see that we had 13 below-basic, and we had five in the below-basic category. So, for us to have, and I think this is a huge testament to our grade five teachers, and this really was -- you'll see as we look at the MCAS data that this correlates directly, but you'll see, you don't only have five students in our entire fifth grade that were in the below-basic category. It was really a testament to their teaching and also is reflected in the MCAS when you look at that data. It's the highest that the grade five ELA has ever been, so that's straight from there. So, this is our last year's grade six comprehension data. So, you'll see that we had 28 students in the advanced category at the beginning of the year. At the end of the year, we had 50 in the advanced category. We had 13 in the below-basic category. At the end of the year, we had five as well.
What's the assessment that is coming from?
That's from SMI.
SMI, okay.
Yeah, so that's the computer-based one that changes. So, and this is grade seven. You'll see at the top, there's only 75 students that took our grade seven assessment, and these are the students that were in our Lit Lab last year. So, these are our students that were in the small-group reading classes, and those students, you know, we started with 24. That number went down to 13 in the below-basic. You'll see we had three that tested in the advanced, and those students, and that moved up to five. As students get older, you'll see that shifting them in categories gets a lot more difficult, and that's, you know, research just tells us, as students get older, it's a lot harder to improve their reading comprehension. That's why it's so important to get them when they're young. So, this is the math SMI data. So, this is something, as a district, we've been talking about and something that we really, you know, to me, was at the beginning of the year, we said, you know, we really need to put a focus on math and professional development around math and really figure out how we can get these students up. So, you'll see when the students came in in grade four, so our current grade four students, when they took the fluency screeners and they were assessed at, you know, the grade four standards on where they should be when they come in the year, it's 48 percent were below-basic. So, it's important to note, however, that this test, this SMI test, is more rigorous than MCAS, and it also is the first time that these students have taken a computer-based assessment. So, there's some things there, but still, 48 percent of our students is something that, you know, is definitely -- we need to pay attention to that, because if we don't, you know, we don't get these students up, then it's definitely going to be reflected in our assessment in the spring. So, this is our grade five. You can see it's a little bit better, but still, grade five is -- 35 percent is still, you know, unacceptable for that nice sense to be below-basic. You'll hear about some of the things that we're going to do to alleviate that. So, talking now just about our MCAS data, so how does that transition to MCAS and what our students took for their summative assessment in the spring? You'll see our grade four MCAS data. You know, what we -- the way we look at our data is we group our advanced and our proficient categories, and really grouping those two categories and comparing those against the state, we want to see over the -- over time if we're improving or if we're going down or what we're doing. So, when you group those two categories in grade four, it stayed about the same for grade four ELA, and it stayed about the same for grade four math. So, that's our grade four ELA data. You'll see we were slightly above the state in the proficient category, and then slightly below the state in the advanced category. And this is our math data. You'll see the same thing, slightly above in the proficient, slightly above in the -- or slightly below in the advanced category. Looking at our trends over the last few years, this is the grade four CPI and the SGP. So, in layman's terms, the top two bars, so the green and the red lines, would be our[1791.13] would be our composite performance index. So what is that? That's the average of how well our students are doing. So when you average all of our scores, how are our students doing? Basically from 2011 to 2015, our students are staying consistently flat, right about the seventy-five percentile. And those two, that green and that yellow line beneath that, that is our student growth percentile. So that is how fast are our students growing compared to other students in the state. And you'll see that with our math, we made some strong gains and then, you know, kinda flatlined. And with our ELA, we had a slight decrease in 2014. And as we're starting to revamp our writing program, you know, I think you're gonna see some, some significant gains there. Cause most of the assessment data told us that it was around writing. We were about, I think, eight or nine percentage points below the state in our essay. And so obviously that's been a huge area of focus for us. English Language Arts in grade five, I think I referenced it earlier. The grade five data for ELA was pretty good. It was, you know, the highest that it's been in grade five. It still needs to improve, it's, you know, we're not satisfied with where it is, but they're definitely on the right track. What I liked most about this data, what's most exciting, I think, is if you look at the red and you'll see that that translates directly to the SRI test where we only had those five students that were in the well below basic category. Our number in the red compared to the state is lower. And really, you know, it means that we're taking care of all of our students and there's not many kids that are getting left behind in, in ELA in grade five. Now ELA and math in grade five, that's the area that we talked about before when we saw the SMI data. And that reflects right there that when we compare our literacy data to our math data, now we look at the MCAS assessment and we see that we have more students in the warning category than the state and less students in the advanced and proficient categories. We're about the same in proficient, but less in the advanced and proficient. So that's obviously an area that we need to target our instruction and take a, a real look at our curriculum. So this, and then our science data stayed about the same. If you look at our science data, we have a lot of students that were in the needs improvement category. So when I look at that and we talk about that as a leadership team, we say, what that means is there's a couple of questions. It's just a couple, typically it's just, it could be one or two questions that take those students from the needs improvement category to the proficient category. So we really need to look at those questions and find out, why are those kids scoring needs improvement? And we have been doing that as opposed to, you know, proficient. So when you look at our data trends, so those top three lines, similar to the grade four data, that's basically the average of our proficiency levels. So how are our students averaging over, since 2011? And you'll see that the blue line is our ELA scores. Our ELA scores, once again correlating with our, our work on literacy and our SRI testing, our blue line is steadily going up. Our red line is flatlining and our yellow, our science, is, you know, increased from 2011, but still is pretty, pretty flat. And then if you look at the purple line, the purple line is the one that really catches your eye right away. So that, even though, if you look above, you'll see the CPI is staying pretty consistent. So our students are testing basically at the same proficiency levels, but they're not growing as fast as the rest of the students in the state. So why is that significantly changing since 2012? And the work we've done to look at our curriculum, when we looked at our fifth grade curriculum map, basically we were using GoMath, but we weren't following GoMath. We were doing chapter one, then we were going to chapter nine. Then we were going to chapter two and we were teaching half of chapter two, going to chapter seven, going to four to twelve. It was, we were trying to align our curriculum resource with the five DP's curriculum maps. And you can tell just by looking at that, that it's, you know, that it wasn't working for us. So this year, we just said, you know, we're gonna follow GoMath. We're paying a lot of money for this resource, there's a lot of research that goes into it. We're gonna follow GoMath from the beginning, chapter one, and we're gonna follow it all the way through. So we're hoping that by doing that, we're gonna see us hit all of the curriculum standards that we need to hit along the way. And you know, there's, there's no denying that, that that growth has a lot to do with teacher retention and turnover as well. And last year, we had four new teachers in grade five. And, you know, that's, that's just, you know, part of the, part of the equation. When you have new teachers, those teachers need to be trained in a program, they need the PD to learn the new program. When you have something like GoMath, that's pretty complex. If you, you know, if you just give those students, if you just give those teachers a product and say, okay, here's, you know, here's GoMath, now teach it, you know, it doesn't work. And so that's something that we're, you know, we're not doing. But it takes time to develop those skills and develop those teachers. Looking at grade six, grade six is really, the data in grade six is really exciting. It's really saying, if we're gonna copy something or emulate something and say, let's find out what's working really well in our district and let's emulate that and try to, you know, and try to see how is that working and what can we, what can we do? The grade six ELA scores were above the state average in advanced and proficient categories. The grade six math, if you guys remember my presentation last year, grade six math was something that, that was a hard pill to, to digest. And the grade six math last year compared to this year, they went up twenty-eight percent. So I think Mr. Kirby tied it in here somewhere, but a twenty-eight percent gain in one year for, for MCAS scores is pretty astronomical and that, that goes directly to our teachers working extremely hard. So if you look at our averages over the last few years, you can see, when you start to see all the lines go up at the end there, that tells you that something that these, something that we're doing is working here and it's, and we need to keep doing it. And then we started thinking about this, okay, well, let's, let's think about our grade six and why is everything working well? Okay, well, we implemented GoMath for the first time last year. They never had a curriculum before in grade six for math. Now we have a curriculum in grade, in grade six. The teachers followed it basically from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. We have technology, the sixth grade implemented Ten Marks, Khan Academy. Every single Friday, they had, they were reinforcing their lessons with the Ten Marks and making sure that their students were doing work at home on Ten Marks. It was really something that we did a lot. Our grade six ICE block, they were hardwired, they had consistent, they had consistent Wi-Fi access. Our grade six had a, our grade six math ICE block had a growth percentile of sixty-eight, which is really high. So that tells us that, that those interventions were working. Also, which is the most important thing, I think, is every single teacher in sixth grade has been teaching for at least six years. So those teachers are really strong, they collaborate a lot together, they really utilize their common planning time and, you know, they're, and they've really invested in our town and invested in Winthrop. And so, you know, that's something we need to try to pass on to every single grade. Looking at grade seven, our ELA scores in grade seven, we definitely had, we definitely have strong ELA scores across the board in, in grade six and seven. When looking at our math scores, this is, this is the hard pill to digest for me this year. This is something I've, you know, lost some sleep over. If you look at our school, state level, I mean, the state level, if you compare how kids in the state did in seventh grade versus sixth grade, they didn't do very well. So the state in general didn't do well in seventh grade, but we also didn't do well in seventh grade. So this is an area that we really need to improve. These students had a, you know, they struggled in sixth grade. When we look at our seventh grade, they didn't have, they didn't have a curriculum last year. So we didn't get GoMath until late December. By late December, after we found the funding and got everything in order, so by January, they had it, but it was really hard for them to implement it effectively. And now they have it a hundred percent GoMath, you know, from the beginning to the end of the year. So I think, I think these numbers, hopefully this is the last time that we see data like this in our, in our grade seven. So if you look at our CPI trends, so the top two lines again are our proficiencies, our average proficiencies, so how well our kids are doing overall. The bottom two lines, SGP, the growth percentiles, how fast our kids are growing compared to other kids in the state. So basically, you know, the summary of the data, we have significant growth in grade five ELA, grade six math ELA, grade seven ELA, we should've put up there as well. We're staying pretty consistent with grade four. Our effective implementation of curriculum and teacher retention equals results. So in the grades where we have teachers that are working, collaborating, that have been here for a while and we have a solid curriculum in place, we see what we're doing, our interventions are working. And then we know that math is a significant area of concern in grades five and seven. And I would say grade four as well. So our action steps, so what are we gonna do about this? Well, we have a pretty thorough student school improvement plan. It's on our website too, if you wanna go on there and look at all the details. It's, it's accessible right there under the main link, School Improvement Plan. Our school improvement goals this year are to improve student writing, improve instruction for students with disabilities, continue work on our literacy and math interventions and also to increase our parent engagement. So improve writing instruction. We have a strong focus this year on volume and engagement. You'll see we went from thirty minutes to forty-eight minutes. And anyone that has a student in grade four or five can tell you that our students are writing a lot. They, the Writer's Workshop model is all about writing at least a page every single day and it's all about getting kids excited about writing and really sharing their writing with others and giving the teachers the tools to improve, to improve student writing. We're looking, working closely with a company called TLA, Teaching and Learning Alliance, that's offering our PD. We had a summer writing institute. Over twenty teachers came in over the summer and attended a summer writing institute. That was a three-day event. They planned all their lessons for September and October and we continue to plan our lessons one month in advance. So I think it was a pretty good commitment for our teachers to all come in and, and make sure we were prepared to start this on day one. And pre and post-assessments, we do pre and post-assessments of every genre that we teach in writing. Our literacy math interventions, we now have ESPs in every fourth and fifth grade classroom during the math block. This took a lot of work. Mr. Curly helped me out a lot over the summer, really trying to reallocate our scheduling and make it as efficient as possible to make sure that we could put ESPs into these classes to offer additional support for our students. You learn about the SMI we're using to identify our groups. Technology in Ten Marks is integrated into every classroom and curriculum maps are being improved and the seventh grade GoMath is being implemented. We're doing some school website, or we're doing some school site visits. There's a school in Beverly, it has a very similar demographic to us, it's called the Ayr School. We have a couple of members of our leadership team are gonna go to this school and talk with them about, they're the only level one school in Beverly. And we're gonna go talk with them and really tour their facility on November ninth and say, you know, what, what are they doing in this school that we can kinda, you know, beg, borrow and steal and bring back to our district? And also Mr. Woods has been doing a great job bringing on a company called Looney Math Consultants. And we're looking into partnering with them to provide our teachers with some high-quality PD around math instruction. So we're going to Quincy, Quincy in December to really, to look at one of their trainings to see if this is something that we wanna invest in. We have, you know, high-quality PD, we have increased ICE block Chromebook classes. So based on the data we saw last year, we increased the number of those classes. We have, we have special ed teachers in every one of those classes as well in grade six. So we have two classes, we have two teachers in each class. So our goal is to make sure by the end of the year, we get those students up. We have Ten Marks and Lexia that we're going to be using for homework. This is something that we've been, we're talking with our leadership team and talking with the teachers about. It's gonna be a big shift, but we really think if we start assigning and using some of this technology outside of the school and opening the school up in the morning and the afternoon, then we'll be able to continue the learning. And also working closely with our Twenty First Century Program. We have over sixty students that have enrolled in our after-school program. And when we start thinking about that, okay, we have sixty of our students, ten percent of our students until six o'clock at night. So that's a great opportunity to provide these students with, you know, some more interventions if they need them or make sure that they're getting the support they need. So this is a lot of text, I'm just gonna give you the bullets, I put it in there so you can kinda read through it. I think it's important because the school committee has invested, the town has invested in some programs you've put in our school. We had the Chromebooks that the town invested in. We had a reading specialist that you added to our school last year. So what was the investment, how did it pay off? You know, what do we see from that? And in grade six, nineteen of the thirty-seven students that were enrolled, enrolled in the ICE intervention in ELA moved from needs improvement to proficient. We had three of eleven students move from warning to needs improvement. In grade seven, eleven of the thirty-one students moved from needs improvement to proficient. And three of the six students moved from warning category or alt assessment to needs improvement. And then due to these increased proficiency levels, we only have sixty students in Lit Lab this year. Last year, we had ninety-six students starting the year needing literacy interventions. So I'd say that's, you know, that's some tremendous progress. And students in grade six math ICE had an average growth percentile of sixty-eight, which is, which is a really high number. For students with learning differences, we have decreased numbers of students in our inclusion classrooms. We have more teachers with dual certification. We have veteran teachers that are going out, getting their licensure and special ed so that they can provide more support and we can cut down the number in our inclusion classrooms. We have strategic placement of interventionists and increased use of technology to differentiate instruction. Also one thing, Ms. O'Connell has been amazing. We've been working together a lot to make sure that all of our special ed teachers get the same PD that our general ed teachers. Before it was a little bit fragmented. Now all our special ed teachers are doing Writer's Workshop. They've all been trained in Writer's Workshop. They're all taking a look at our SMI data. They're all, we're all on the same page, kinda rowing together, which is, which is exciting. Parent engagement is another goal of ours and this, I'm just gonna go through pretty quickly, but this is just communication. If you're a parent from the ATC, you probably get a lot of communication from me. You get a lot of emails, phone calls. I do a monthly newsletter and we try to really keep parents updated on everything that's happening in our school. We have events that are designed to bring parents through the doors. We have a great event coming up in December, International Night. I encourage you all to come, it's a great night where we celebrate the culture of all the students in our, in our district. We've been working as a leadership team to do outreach to ELL families in our district and make sure that they feel welcome and make sure they feel like we're really embracing their cultures. And also working closely with our PTO. Our PTO has been putting on game nights and doing these incredible things to, to improve parent engagement. And also, you know, the most important one is that just building trust and making sure that parents wanna come in our building. So summary, many exciting things to celebrate. Thank you for listening, I know this is a lot of, a lot to digest. The areas in our school improvement plan need to take high priority. Collaboration, high expectations, professional development and resources are needed to move our school forward. And if you have any questions, I want to field that.
First of all, I wanna thank you, it was a great presentation, thank you very much. Well-understood by myself and I'm sure my colleagues here. When I was looking at the very beginning of your presentation, I noticed that the writing workshop is only in grades four and five and I know Ms. Pearson also has the writing workshop in her school building at the fort. My question is, is that are you anticipating that we will introduce the writing workshop in grade six and seven as they move on back into the middle school? Because, you know, I know that, and I think we saw some worth to that where you brought back a formalized curriculum in math with the GoMath program in the sixth and seventh where they never had a formal program and I think we saw a, a good result. I know that the seventh grade was still shaky, but the sixth grade showed great growth and potential. Would you anticipate that we would do the writing workshop? Or is there any type of collaboration that has been spoken about to move that on?
Yeah, so that's, that's a great question because, you know, one of the benefits of having grades four through seven right now is that we can really align our curriculum. And what we did a couple of weeks ago is Ms. Carsley, who's here, and, and our seventh grade ELA lead, Ms. Dunn, went with us, with the fourth grade, with myself and with the fourth and fifth grade lead teachers. And we went to a Writer's Workshop seminar and we really learned about it together. And we had lunch together and talked about, you know, how is this gonna transition next year when these fifth grade students go to sixth grade and to seventh grade? Ms. Dunn is actually doing Writer's Workshop in seventh grade. When you get to seventh grade, it's a little bit, sixth grade and seventh grade, it's a little bit different because in fourth and fifth grade, you're covering the curriculum frameworks more during your ELA block. And then during writing, it's more about the volume and the engagement. And so when you go to sixth grade, she has to cover everything, they have to cover everything in sixty minutes. And so as opposed to having the forty-eight minute block and the one hundred and twenty minute block that you have in fourth and fifth. So the model has to change a little bit, but I think, I think we should definitely stay on the same page.
I'm going to assume you're, you're moving on the same criteria that you're looking for in the writing workshop in grade four and five and, and for the grade six and seven to mimic that, as, as you're saying, on a more mature level. Like you said, it's a volume of writing as opposed to teaching the children how to construct sentences and not that sixth and seventh graders can't help, can't use that, but I'm sure that that will greatly improve. As you were saying, it was the essay part that our kids didn't do well in and the more they... And the more they write, the better they get, so, okay, thank you.
Sure.
Just on that, could you have that during the ICE Block, more writing program?
Yeah, we do, I mean, so right now, we have the critical and creative thinking in grade six, and we have the creative writing in grade seven. And both of those implement creative writing. We have a journalism class in grade seven as well, and so there's a lot of, you know. But I think, I think you're, I think you're on something with that. Because continuing the writing piece into that would be, you know, would be a good next one.
First I wanna say, great job, I love that you came in and have done things. And not saying, we're talking about doing this, we're thinking about doing this, we're looking, you've actually done things. I love the math block being put together, you know, instead of fragmented. So I love to hear what you presented tonight, you know, things have been put into action. With the grade six, how you wanted to replicate that in other grades, have you started looking how you can do that? Or?
Yeah, I mean, we were, we were actually talking about it today at the leadership team meeting. And I think having those teachers come and share with the other teachers and say, how do we meet? What do we talk about? What is this, you know, what does this look like? And, you know, sharing some of their notes from their common planning time, some of their projects, you know.
Segway into that, you mentioned one of the potential factors with the lower scores was the teacher turnover of having, you know, new teachers. Do we have mentors in the schools that I think we place stipends for? Is that something that we need to look at the mentoring program to expand it or change it? If that's not working, or not enough time?
I think the mentor program is really good. I've seen, I've seen it work. Something we might wanna look into is extending it to two years. So, you know, for teachers that could benefit, from teachers that could benefit from an additional year of mentorship. You know, because we have, it is really hard for those teachers to come in, to learn IPASS, to learn, you know, to learn all of our new Go Math programs and learn this and learn the culture of the district, and then move forward within the first year. It takes time.
Right, and that's why I see we come under the mentoring program, something we can certainly, you know, work on or fix. Now, you mentioned earlier, and I agree with you, that as the children get older, they upgrade, if they really don't capture the ELA, it's tougher for them to get. I've seen that, and I understand that. Is that the case with math? That I don't know, I'm just asking. Do they have the same challenge in the upper grades if they don't get the basic, you know, math?
Yeah, so math is foundational. So math, you know, math builds upon itself, kinda like a pyramid. And so if they miss the building blocks and their teachers are covering the content curriculum standards, so they're saying, well, we're covering grade seven. And that's what, by the end of the year, I have to cover all these grade seven frameworks. And those kids are still struggling with, you know, multiplication or addition or fractions or different things, then it presents, it definitely presents.
So is that a problem this year, or last year's MCAS, seventh grade? Just how do we fix that?
I think, you know what, I think the seventh grade tested us on seventh grade standards. And we had some supports that were put into place in seventh grade. But to get those students up, we had to meet them where they were at. And so, you know, that's why we like the SMI, 'cause it shows the growth. As opposed to just, you know, we tested you on grade seven. Well, yeah, we know we were gonna test well on grade seven, but did we make good gains last year? Are we on the right track? And I think we are, I really do.
And last question, last year was a transition year also. Did that have a major effect on academics?
I think, you know, I think it did to a little, a little extent. But I think, you know, I think we tried to capitalize on what we could and do our best. And I think considering that we've made some good gains in some areas, I think, I don't think it hurts too bad.
And what's, what are your class sizes like?
Grade six class sizes are our lowest. They are between, I would say, around twenty kids. Our grade seven is higher, it's about twenty-four kids, twenty-five kids. Grade four is about the same, twenty-four, twenty-five. Grade five is a little bit lower, it's down to, I would say, you know, twenty-two, twenty-three.
And I know, was it grade six, you lost like twenty-five students from last spring to this fall? Looking at the math, it looks like you lost twenty-five students.
In grade six?
Yes, I think it was grade six.
Yeah.
Fifth grade last year.
I think it was just a shift in grades.
You gotta look at the fifth grade the year before.
Yeah, just a shift of grades.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, this chart right here, grade six showing twenty-five less students. I'm just trying to figure why such a significant decrease.
So our grades, so grade five.
Smaller class.
Grade six has a smaller number of, there's two classes. Grade six and five are our smallest grades in the system.
Well, I'm assuming grade six is, how it's in the chart, has been traveling from two thousand fourteen September to, I mean, it's the same grade six as the last year and a half.
So that was, so that was grade six in two thousand fourteen was a hundred and sixty-eight.
Yes.
And that would be our current grade seven, which is a hundred and sixty-nine.
Right, and so the total in June of two thousand fifteen, I was assuming it was the same grade six that traveled from the fall?
No, it's the grade five that became the grade six. You gotta look at those numbers diagonally.
Yeah, okay. Right.
Yeah, it stayed, it stayed about the same.
Just looks like that though, 'cause you're looking at it from across. But if you, if you go down one, you'll see it better.
Then within the school year, I'm trying to figure, so this was in the same school year? Your total in September, grade four?
Yeah. September, grade five.
So the same, same grade? Because you have the same, I'm assuming it's the same academic year? September fourteen and June of fifteen is the same academic year?
Yeah, so this is, this was.
So you're kinda reading this this way?
Last year's grade four, last year's grade five, last year's grade six, last year's grade seven.
So the first two columns is the same academic year, but then the third column?
Moves down, right.
Okay, okay, I was just gonna, okay, sorry.
There might have been a little unclear, that's, I apologize if it was, if it was a little unclear. They've stayed pretty, pretty consistent, those numbers.
Any other questions? Yes, Solomon.
First of all, I think you did a great job. I like how you spoke a little bit about how you're also using the technology and the individualized interventions to challenge all the students. You know, not just working closely with the students in the warning category to bring them up, but also to try to help more students feel challenged and go into the proficient or advanced categories. I have a couple of questions about the technology. I know the Chromebooks were such, were kind of a big addition. And I know there's been a lot of Wi-Fi connection issues. And so I wonder if you could just speak to how, well, what I'm really thinking about is how is the teacher's comfort level with the new technology and with some of the challenges we've had, you know, infrastructure-wise? But over the last year or so, have you felt like the teacher's confidence or comfort level with the new technology has improved, or do we still need to help out with that?
Yeah, so I think last year when we first rolled them out, it was really overwhelming. And I think a lot of teachers and, you know, even myself, you know, we felt a little bit, you know, what are the programs that work, what are the ones that don't work? And we have all these different apps, and, you know, what should we be using? And so, over the course of last year, we really identified the programs that really, we think work and the ones that don't work, and we're kinda still filtering through a lot of that. The basic operation of the Chromebook, our teachers have been really quick studies. They, we did workshops after school, we did tech workshops last year. I did that on Thursdays, and I'd have over twenty teachers that would come and attend sometimes and learn about those programs and try to get more affluent with them. We have teachers now, like Mary McGunigal, that runs Tomorrow Morning. She's running a morning Lexia tutorial for the teachers. That's just on her own time, voluntary, that she's gonna be there in the morning, the teachers are gonna come in and learn from her about how to use Lexia better, how to look at the data better. And so I think I'm really lucky, 'cause I got teacher leaders that are taking some ownership of that and helping, you know, helping support us. Definitely still, you know, could definitely get better, but.
Yeah, I'm sure, I think you've done a great job with that. I think too, the transition we'll have for next year, you know, talking about going back to grades three through five versus four through seven, I think it's a really different group developmentally-wise. Emotional, social-emotional, you know, cognitive, you know, all of those areas. So the work you're doing with all of this and the technology, that's going to be, if you could speak to how applicable that's gonna be when your grades change next year?
Yeah, so my, you know, my mentality is, you know, technology is a tool that should complement your direct instruction. So, you know, I, my ideal number would be to have at least eight Chromebooks in every single classroom, grade, you know, you know, grade three to five. So that student, teachers can use that to complement what they're doing every single day. It's a great tool, it's wonderful for all of our students. The other day, I saw a student that is in fourth grade, speaks very limited English, was really frustrated that everyone else was doing a lot of writing with the, with our Writer's Workshop, and he was really struggling with that. And so we taught him how to use the voice typing. So he just talks into the computer now, and he's able to contribute and really share his ideas, and he's really able to move forward. And so I think, you know, the technology is just, it's awesome. And it's definitely the tool that I think can move the needle. When you see our scores and you see kinda, everything is flat over years, well, how do we move the needle? And I think the way we do that is by integrating the technology and finding the programs that engage the kids and meet them where they're at. And I think we're starting to do that.
That's great, I know in my house, we have just a new excitement for school, so thank you for what you're doing there.
Mr. Harity, on your action steps, you have increased parent engagement.
Yes.
Which perhaps is the most difficult of all of the goals that you have.
Yeah.
You can, you can get in resources for your teachers, you can learn from those above and below you, but getting parents in the door is a huge challenge.
Yeah.
And, and in my opinion, one of the most important challenges. Because my children spend more time with me than they do with you. And so, my, as a parent, my input, my helping them with their education is extremely important. I remember Andrea O'Leary teaching a class to parents on math back at the Gorman School. And it was incredibly enlightening to me as an adult to know how this new math, how this math was being taught to my children. Because it helped me tremendously at home with homework. Because the way that my children are doing math is different than the way I did math. So I hope that you are able to get more of us into the building and help us be engaged with our children. I think that'll be a big help.
Yeah, I mean, I'm hopeful, you know, the thing is, it's always, you always gotta look at, you know, there's schools out there that are doing, there's schools out there that have really high parent participation rates and have very similar demographics to us. So we gotta go look at those schools and say, you know, like that school in Beverly. Go say, you know, what are they doing? And how are they bringing people through the doors? And what are the programs that they're using that the parents appreciate, find valuable? You know, how are they communicating with the parents? And we gotta try to, you know, try to imitate and then, you know, make it our own. So it's, it's definitely gonna be hard work, but.
Lots of challenges.
Anything else, Mr. Harity?
I just want to thank our teachers too, you know, because I know they're the backbone of what we do. And I, you know, it's tough when you're trying to come up the hill. It's easy when you're on the top of the hill, but it's hard to go up. And I wanna thank them for continuing to work hard.
I agree, we're very lucky, we have, you know, we have great teachers.
Yes, we do, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harity.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Curly. If there's no objections, we're gonna take a few minutes for recess. Athletics, Mr. Holden.
A couple of weeks ago, we had an athletics subcommittee report, as well attended. One of the topics was the state of affairs with athletics in Lipton High School. Ms. Masarino gave a report, everything is going extremely well budget-wise, athletic-wise, coach-wise, player-wise. Was good to hear, fall sports are coming to a conclusion, we're heading into the playoffs. I think all our teams made the playoffs except maybe one, which might be golf, I'm not sure. We're gearing up for the winter sports. I know there's postings for JV and freshman coaches for girls and boys basketball, but otherwise, the programs are up and running, coaches are enthusiastic for the winter sports.
No.
Talked about administration staff, Ms. Masarino feels like he has adequate staff, trainers that the students need before and during and after games. Also, I think Thomas is also with us, a lot of good points you brought up. Talked about user fees, I know I like to go right from, you know, hundreds to zero, but I don't think there'll be zero next year, but we are looking to lower them. And that'll be during the budget cycle, when we discuss the overall school budget and what we can do to lower the user fees. Another thing, Ms. Chavez is still there. We're talking about policies, and I don't think athletic policies were really looked at in maybe a couple of decades. And some are in the book, some aren't in the book, and we quite frankly don't even know what ones are out there anymore. So we are establishing a, similar to the Charter Commission, a Athletic Commission on Athletic Policies. And I know Ms. Chavez has volunteered to, you know, to be on it, Phil Lundberg, and I think Susan was volunteered by Mr. Masero. And if there's anyone else that is interested in being part of this policy review of athletics, by all means, contact Mr. Masero, myself. I'll probably be setting up a meeting within the next week or two, just to organize how we're gonna go forward, see what policies we have in the book and where we're going. And that was pretty much it for athletics.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Ms. Holden, Buildings and Grounds.
We had a Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee meeting tonight before this meeting at six PM. And attendance was myself, Mr. Masero, and Mr. Perrin. On the agenda tonight was the status of the inspections of the school playgrounds. And we did hear from the Director of Parks and Rec that that's going to be completed. There's a meeting set up for Friday, so we didn't have that information tonight as anticipated. Also on the agenda tonight was the school building maintenance plan. And Mr. Masero presented us with a plan here that I'm holding from Gilbane, which is an opportunity for us to have our brand-new middle school, high school complex, as well as our Arthur C. Cummings School and Gorman Fort Banks School. Looked at, sort of, all completely looked at what needs to be maintained, when it needs to be maintained, what parts, you know, a whole list of things. So I actually would like to turn it over to you for a second, because you presented that to us tonight. And I think it's very much worth taking a look at if this is the direction we wanna go.
So the, Gilbane has looked at a facility management program for us that would work in conjunction with School Dude. We currently have School Dude, which is a ticketing process to allow our folks, whenever there's a maintenance issue or maintenance occurrences that come up, where staff or people can put in. One of the things that we're very concerned about is we go through having three relatively after, starting in June, we're gonna have three relatively brand-new buildings, the oldest being ten years old, is pre-maintenance, making sure that the equipment that we have is properly maintained at all times. And so what Gilbane has given us a proposal of is to take all of our equipment pieces, and there, in the new building, there'll be over five hundred pieces of maintenance technology pieces. And so, there are already four hundred and twenty-one in the Cummings, and there's about four hundred and fifty in the Fort Banks. And so what they will do is they will digitalize all of those with a scanner. They will code each one, scan them all into the School Dude program. And then what that will do is they will set the timeframes when those should all appear and make sure that they've had their pre-maintenance. Or it'll come up for the custodian that says, it's time to make sure you're calling for this, to have that company come out and check this, and do all of these types of services. So it's constantly in the system for us. And if they don't, so if they miss, it's a dashboard. The dashboard will say, you're three days overdue, you're five days overdue. And there's backup, the backup would be the principal seeing that list as well, as well as the facilities director seeing that. So there's multiple, you know, safety nets put in so that we do not get into a situation where when we open the William P. Gorman Fort Banks, three years later or five years later, we're replacing a boiler. Those are the types of things that we wanna make sure that we continuously maintain our buildings. So of course, there is a cost to these items. I think the cost that they've projected in this particular plan, and here again, because it's, we are a town and a plan, if we decide to move in this direction, we will have to look at all bids and options as well. But originally, when I was talking to them, they were talking about a dollar a square foot. Well, we have about three hundred and seventy-six thousand square feet in, with the three buildings. But that, but slowly but surely, they have brought that number down. And those numbers are now well under a hundred thousand. Probably, I think if we did all three schools, it was somewhere in the eighties, maybe eighty-nine. Now, one of the things that I will be talking to- Now, one of the things that I will be talking to with the school building committee next week is about trying to tie the Winter Middle High School, school itself, and see if we can have funding that would come from that project, that would at least get that, all of those pieces taken care of and put in, computerized and all of that. The William P. Gorman School and the Fort, the Arthur T. Cummings School is ours, we have that. So I would either be looking at funding throughout the budget, which that's gonna be tough for this year, or the other option I was gonna take a look at was I was gonna go back to the Town Council and take a look at those maintenance activity counts that have been created through free cash that have come in where a percentage goes into maintenance, percentage goes into capital improvement and areas like that, and say, is it possible that we could pick up the remaining two schools and get them on a plan? Because it's only gonna help us in the long run. So I think it's a good, it's a good move in the right direction and so we, we just wanna get moving on it as quickly as we can.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's a, the plan that, that you presented tonight is very comprehensive and it's the direction that the town wants us to go in to maintain all of our new schools and is the, you know, the promise that we've all made as a school committee to, to make sure we do our best with that. So I think it's definitely the direction we wanna go and we talked a little bit about making sure this was the product we would want, you know, compared to another company or whatever we would need. So I think that's where it stands now. There were no votes taken. That was about it.
Mr. Perrin, your question?
Also, it's a one-time fee?
Yes.
So it's not a yearly fee?
Right. The one-time fee is putting it all in the system because we pay an annual fee now to School Dude, which would be our, our company that would keep everything, you know.
Records.
Records telling us when we've done the checks and everything like that.
And also, it's a, it looks at the long term, it's just not like a one or two or three-year projection of what's gonna have to be done, it goes over the life of what the mechanics are.
Correct.
Any questions for Ms. Sullivan or Mr. Holden?
I was just, I, more so, Brian and I were talking about this particular program that hopefully will be instituted. And we were also saying is that hopefully, I know that our citizens have over the years, you know, brought to our attention the condition of our buildings and how much we haven't been maintaining them. This will be a way that that gets recorded because it actually gets recorded besides letting us know that certain, like it could be the HVAC or it could be a stove in the kitchens. It does all of that. So that way, our maintenance will be upkept and we can address the needs as they happen as opposed to waiting until they totally fall apart. So I'm hoping that this would, will be a very positive thing, especially with the new school and bringing on board the other two schools.
Thank you, Mrs. Sharkey. Next, Mr. Superintendent, do you have a report?
Great, thank you. And I'm just gonna add to the maintenance that we're talking about. The one good thing as well too is that we have, we budget money. I want folks to understand that we budget money for maintenance, pre-maintenance checkups and all of those areas. So now, we would have that all in place so that we're doing it properly and hopefully the maintenance budgets that we have will start to decrease on having to do all of these repairs in major and will start to be more of a pre-maintenance type of budget. And that's, that's the goal on it. So moving along, we also, as you know, you don't see Mr. Gordon here, today was Mr. Gordon's last day after the town. Currently, they are working, see if they do have a committee to interview folks for this new Chief Financial Officer. On that committee from the school committee is John Sullivan, who will be representing the school committee, along with Jim Lutery from the Town Council, Barbara Flavin from the Citizens Finance, Jim McKenna, Town Manager, and myself from the school, School Department. We will, I know that they have multiple applications that have come in and we will start that interviewing process moving along. In the meantime, we will be working with Dick Hinkston, who's been kind of never, has never left us, he's been a consultant that's been working with us, will be working continuously with the town, as well as Elizabeth, her name known as Biz, and Susan, you know, from the schools and Biz and the town, and we will keep things going as best we can.
I just, I know there was discussion earlier about the school side getting their own in town, I just.
I think that's a discussion that's coming up on the agenda a little later. Then we have, so just a reminder to everybody that on Saturday, this Saturday, November 7th, at 10 o'clock, will be the park dedication under Mariana Fabiano. That'll be at 10 o'clock in the morning. We are putting together a, a quick agenda. We're very excited and hopefully the weather's looking okay right now, which is good. And so it should be a wonderful event and I, I invite the community to, to please join us. I think that the park is beautiful and this week with the weather gonna be 70 degrees every day, we're gonna see a lot more enjoyment in that park as it goes along. The other thing that I wanted to tell you is that you may notice when you drive in and out of Winthrop, but there is a new sign when you enter into Winthrop, Massachusetts on both ends, it's above the Boys Basketball State Championship. It says, "The National Champions Cheerleaders from last year, 2015." We will have a little ceremony on that, the weekend of Thanksgiving, because the captain will be back and we'll just do a little ceremony, I'll give more information at the next meeting. But when we had ordered the signs, I had said to Mr. Honig, so where's the sign now? He says, "It's up." I said, "It's up?" He said, "It's already put up." He says, "Oh, no, we don't waste time, we just put 'em up." So, but congratulations on that behalf. The, let's see, middle school, okay. Currently, tomorrow, as you know, there is the school committee, but just a reminder to parents, I don't know if this is live or not, so by the time they see it, it could be past Tuesday. But there is no school tomorrow for students?
Tomorrow is Tuesday.
Tomorrow's Tuesday, November 3rd. There's no school tomorrow due to Election Day, they use the Arthur T. Cummings School. And all our teachers, staff, the entire staff, will be housed at the Winthrop High School Auditorium tomorrow. The reason the entire staff, and when I say entire staff, we're talking teachers, ESPs, custodians, cafeteria, lunch monitors, secretary, bus monitors, coaches, everybody that's affiliated with Winthrop Public Schools will be there tomorrow to do, we're doing a Title IX workshop. It's a two, two workshops in one day for a Title IX. And it's very important for our staff to have that. And so the other schools will be closed down because everybody will be here. So the Arthur T. Cummings School will have the election going on and they do have 21st Century going on, but they have their directors there that will take care of that. And then at the Fort Banks, the Fort Banks, everybody's over here, so the Fort Banks will be closed. And I want people to understand that the high school tomorrow is relatively closed even though we're here, because we're all here for that workshop.
But there's no school for students?
But there is no school for students. No school for students. And so we hope that everybody remembers that tomorrow morning. I'm sure the kids already remember that tonight. So the, a couple of other things, this past weekend, a week ago Friday, I had, did a tour with WCAT and the architects of the new middle-high project. It was a two-month review. We had done it before, two months ago, and this time, we did it in October. And that is currently running on WCAT, if you get a chance to see it. You can also, I believe, download it on WCAT YouTube, Winthrop YouTube. And what's wonderful about it is we just, basically, we show you all the video and we tell you what you're seeing as it goes along. And the nice thing that I've been learning is that we've been taking video and we've been taking pictures from day one. So when this whole project is complete, we will be putting together a nice, you know, how it all began. But if you get a chance, I would instruct you to watch it. I think you'd be very excited to see the project come along. We've talked a lot about transition next year. And as you talked about earlier, that we've had four, our buildings have been eight through 12 and four through seven and three through, you know, K through three. So one of the things that we've implemented right now is a middle school transition team to kind of bring sixth, seventh, and eighth grade teachers back over the next couple of months and start working together about looking at what the focus is going to be as we move towards the new middle-high school. It's important, right now, we are on, on par for a traditional middle-high school with the middle school six through eight and the high school nine through 12. And what we want now is we want the teachers to take a look at this as we're moving in there and what are the schedules gonna look like? How is this going to be created? You know, we want the input, we wanna see everybody and start to get that transition of being back to being a middle school because they haven't been a middle school for a couple of years. So it's important to, to pull that together. We have 12 members that are on that middle school. I'll be meeting with them tomorrow at the conclusion of the professional development. You have wonderful teachers that are on that committee that I know are gonna take full action and, and move us forward and give us the, the best scenario as we move forward for the middle school. The, just looking at my little things, okay. Under Personnel, we only had one appointment, which was Danielle Vecchio. She's now, she was a paraprofessional who has now moved into teaching in a special education classroom. And we've had no other resignations, retirements, no postings at this time and no leave of absence. So that is my report.
Thank you. Next is the warrant. We have warrant SVW16-7 in the amount of $253,550 and 59 cents. I make a motion to approve the warrant. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sullivan. Questions or comments on the warrant? We will vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, it's unanimous. Next is the payroll warrant. We have one payroll warrant dated September 23rd, 2015, in the amount of $593,964 and 23 cents. Make a motion to approve payroll warrant. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by President Gil. All those in favor, is there any questions or comments on the payroll warrant? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, Ms. Haynes, I abstain. I'm voting on the warrant, the payroll warrant. Next, the Buildings and Grounds. We have three requests from Parks and Recs for basketball, one from Mass Start for a Family Event, and one from the Winter Lodge of Elks for their annual hoop shoot. Motion to take them all as one? Motion by President Gil, second by Mrs. Sharkey. I'm assuming Mr. Gil had your motion and the second, Mrs. Sharkey, is to take them all at once?
Yes.
Thank you. A yes vote will be to approve all of them and no vote will be to not approve. Questions or comments? We will vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, it's unanimous. Oh, I am sorry. It seems, I believe, I neglected, no, not yet, sorry, I'm okay. Next is New Business. And on your, in front of you this evening, you have something that was on the agenda, but we didn't have the paperwork until after the packet went out. And that is from Boys Basketball Coach, Loyola, for a fundraiser. Which as I said, you have in front of you this evening. Take just a moment to look at that. Motion to approve. Motion by Vice Chairman Perrin to approve that.
Second.
Second by Ms. Sullivan. Any questions or comments on Coach Loyola's request for fundraiser? We will vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, it's unanimous. Next is the disciplinary due process policy.
Chairman, the disciplinary due process comes directly from the new state laws that have been created under the disciplinary for the 37H and a quarter, 37H, it's regarding all-in-school suspension and all of the rules and regulations that they have to take. We had our attorney review this policy and so she has given us the go-ahead now, the green light to bring it to you folks. And so if you wish, I would ask you to recommend it, to go to Policy Subcommittee and then we could move on these ASAP because we do need to get these in.
Motion to send it to the Policy Subcommittee?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Perrin, second by President Gil. Questions or comments on sending this to Policy Subcommittee? We will vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Mr. Holden adjusts. Next on the, under New Business is the School Department Business Manager. As you know, in the past, the School Department had a business manager under consolidation. We did not have a dedicated business manager, but instead shared the town CFO to help us. And this evening, I am going to make a motion. And my motion is to direct the Superintendent to update the job description of a school business manager, provide for a school business manager's salary in the 2016, 2017 School Department budget, and hire a School Department Business Manager no later than July 1st, 2016. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Sharkey. Is there any discussion or comments on this motion?
Just how's it gonna affect the ongoing committee hiring a town? I just wonder how we're coordinating this with the town?
So currently, right now, the Chief Financial Officer, so a couple of things that have to happen, when you, when you hire Chief Financial Officer, you have to make sure that somebody has the, the education certificate for certification for the schools under the DESE. So I guess in this discussion now, we haven't begun yet with, with hiring the Chief Financial Officer. So now, if this is the motion from the school committee, this will allow me to then go to the Town Manager and say, this is the direction that the school committee is, is saying that they want us to go into for the 2016, 17 year. The, the issue that has arisen that we've talked about is that Mr. Gordon did, has done a wonderful job as the Chief Financial Officer for the town. And Ms. Echoes does a phenomenal job as the office manager for the school building. The concern as we move forward is that Mr. It, we did get, Mr. Gordon did get certified to represent the School Department on that. And so we do need to have somebody get certified or we need somebody of that certification. Now, whether or not this position is part-time or full-time, that's the other stuff we need to talk about on it. But I think from what I've heard from, and I don't wanna speak for members of the committee, is that they're looking to make sure that there's also another financial advocate for the School Department as opposed to just the Chief Financial Officer, whose real purpose is to also be, you know, the Town Manager. Even though it sits under with the Superintendent in the conversation, you know, their allegiance is more so to the Town Manager because they're creating all of that stuff. And so I think that's what I'm hearing from what I've heard from people that have spoke, but I'll let you guys speak on it, that's.
Mr. Perrin?
I was against the consolidation piece on both ends when it came up a few years back. I'm not opposed to studying it, but I think it's a pretty broad move without seeing facts and figures. I wanna see what it's gonna cost us in the overall and how it's gonna impact our budget going forward. So to dictate us to do that, this is your last couple of meetings, this is Mary Alice's last couple of meetings, I'm gonna be married to whatever we decide here, so I wanna be sure.
Mr. Perrin, I'm sorry.
This isn't a debate, I'm finishing my statement.
Any school committee can vote anything they want.
Right, but I'm, you're interrupting me speaking. I'm not here to debate you. I'm just telling you that having been here for two terms and being opposed to it initially, I'm telling you that I, I wanna see the cost and the effect. I'm telling you that I want to see the cost and the effect on the budget. To say we're just going to unravel it, and I'm not saying I'm against it, but without having the facts in front of me and having a vote just come up, I'm not interested in it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think we're in the process, where we are in the process of hiring a new CFO, we need to hold on this until we see what the, what the whole CFO system is before we go ahead and determine that we need a business manager. Maybe we need, as you had mentioned some months back, a business manager on a part-time basis who focuses in on this. But I think that this whole situation, given the situation of a new CFO coming in, I think that whole situation has to be looked at at the same time. And I would, I would want to wait until the new committee comes in and do it and after the CFO. That would be my recommendation.
Ms. Sullivan?
I've been wanting to move in the direction of having our own school financial consultant, CFO, business manager, whatever you want to call it, to help us realize the vision that we have of improving education across the board in this school, in this district. And I have, I do think, two things, that the, now that Tim Gordon has resigned and left, it's an opportunity for us to move in that direction where we do have an open position. And ha- having a CFO who is really, you know, split between the school and the town is really putting that person in a position to just, you know, be in conflict at times in terms of advocating for budgetary purposes. So I would like to have someone at least on a part-time, 30-hour position basis working for us to help us realize our vision. Most school districts have that position available to them. I think now is the time to do it. And, you know, we would be looking for someone who can help us really meet our school district goals. And I understand that budgeting for that position will be a challenge, but this would be a position that would help us with the budgeting process in the next few years. We've, you know, we're negotiating with several bargaining units right now and we're putting ourselves in a position to have some challenges with new positions we're looking for for the new school. And I just think this is the direction that we need to go.
Just will quickly, I kind of concur with Mr. Perrin and Mr. Gill. We have a strong voice on the CFO.
It's going to fail.
Committee. So I think if your concerns that you expressed here, you're expressed at that committee and maybe redirect that committee, say, you know what, maybe it's time to split it. I think that would be the time to do it instead of just voting for it tonight. It's just my, my thought, since we do have a voice on that committee.
Yeah, Ms. Sullivan, tell me.
Right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I just have to comment that I'm bothered by the constant competition, feeling of competition. I was not, I was not in favor of consolidation in this community. However, we are one community, and I've said it a thousand times, and I only have three more meetings to say it, we're one community with several departments, one of which is the school department. It makes all kinds of sense to have one CFO who oversees the whole budget, not competing the town against the school. We're one town with several departments. It makes sense to me to have a CFO who is dealing with, looking at all of, all the resources of the community, all of the expenditures in the community. And yes, maybe we do need somebody on the school side who is, who has expertise in the school. And that's why the law requires the person to have certification. But please do not continue to talk about the competition between the town and the school. We live in a town, we pay one set of real estate taxes, we have several departments. Please don't let the competition atmosphere continue. And I would, I don't think we should vote tonight to hire, hire a school department financial manager or whatever we call them before we go through the process of hiring a CFO. In that process, we have representation on the school committee as we do from other departments. Thank you.
Mrs. Sharkey?
Yes, I am in favor.
That's okay.
Looking for a school finance person. And it's not on the basis of, as Peter said, a competition. What I'm looking at is that there are very, very specific needs and requirements for school budgets and school financing. We last year did hire or potentially hire a consultant to work with us who had and knew the ins and outs of the DESE and the requirements and the know-hows and how to approach people and how to work with them. The person was not willing to come on a part-time basis and it was not, you know, serviceable for us to use her as a consultant. So as it ended up, we had nothing except for having a wonderful person like Susan who knows our budget inside and outside. That's not what we're looking for though. We're looking for a person to look for the futuristic needs of our school department. We're not looking always to say to the town, we want, which I will say, a million dollars next year to be able to maintain the services that we need with us, with having a new school and all of those things that are attached. What I'd love to say to the town is, maybe you could give us $500,000, but our school finance person can find $500,000 in his investigation of the, of the resources that are out there for schools. We don't have that. We don't know that. So if we're looking and we can say that we had Tim and there isn't anyone who I supported so heart, wholeheartedly with Tim, but still I'm looking, when it comes to money, you can't have one person serve two masters. And though we may be one community, we have different purposes. And those purposes need to be done by a person who understands the total financial, school, economics, and finances. And that's why I am asking you to consider looking into this and to put a vote out tonight that we can at least get to move forward to be able to accrue more money and not to attack our, our town by saying, give me, give me, give me, give me. What I'm saying to us, we want to stand on our own two feet and find money for ourselves through the hiring of a school finance person.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Perrin stated that this, that both Mrs. Sharkey and I only have a few more meetings left. And that's true, but I don't think that we can stop doing business because Mrs. Sharkey and I are leaving the school committee at the end of the calendar year. We're negotiating contracts with all of our school department unions and I don't know whether Mr. Perrin would like us to stop that process simply because Mrs. Sharkey and I won't be here next year. I'm trying to do what's best for the school department until December 31st at midnight. And that's why I made this motion this evening. Is there any other questions or comments on this?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I think that Mr. Gill has hit it right in the head having the bridge between the two. I'm not suggesting we stop anything as far as negotiations or moving forward with business. I don't think that anyone would suggest that. But what I am saying is this is a really big move and to throw it on the table and saddles with it without knowing the cost or the effect on the coming budget is, it's
Any other questions or comments?
I just want to make one comment in regards to the history, just so that everybody understands because I understand what Mr. Gill is saying as far as competition and stuff. When consolidation was first created, I was just walking in the door and I hadn't even walked in the door yet. The purpose originally was the chief financial officer and the school business manager were all in that same area. When the school business manager, I think it was in that March of that year, resigned and left, then it, you know, it got redirected in a different way of how it was going to work. And lo and behold, Tim came in and then Tim did get the certification on it. So moving forward, as we move forward, we just have to, I think it's a good, Ms. Sullivan's on the committee, could be good discussion. I'm on the committee, can be good discussion about what's going on. And, but I just wanted to make sure that people understood that when it was originally put together, there was a school business manager in the place. It's just that that, when that person left before it actually went into consolidation, that position didn't survive. It went in a different direction, so.
Susan, are you on the committee?
No.
I guess not.
Not yet?
We'll take care of that.
Oh, you know what I'm saying, I mean, something that's.
Right, right.
Ms. Sullivan?
Well, I will say that I have, I was not here through the history of before consolidation and then consolidation, but what I have seen in the last two years is that in, in reality, our part-time financial advisor, you know, financial officer, i- isn't present in budget subcommittee meetings and isn't present at school committee meetings very often. He always was helpful when we had questions and when we asked him to come, but I'm looking for someone to have more presence on an ongoing basis in helping us meet our vision and, and telling us where we can find the money and being creative with our budget in ways that we might not be looking for or looking at. So, you know, there's an area of expertise that I would like someone to be sort of solely, you know, with our department, with our division of the town. So I don't, I don't mean for it to be a negative thing. I think it could just be good overall for, for the town. And I'm sorry if that's perceived that way, but that is a piece that I feel like our department has been missing. And I'm happy to be on the search committee to advocate for what we need to.
Any other questions or comments before we vote? Very good. We will vote. Ms. Haynes, would you please call the roll? A yes vote will be.
Could you repeat the motion, please?
Motion is to direct the superintendent to update the job description for a school business department manager, I'm sorry, for a school department business manager to provide for a business manager's salary in the 2016-2017 school department budget and to hire a business manager no later than July 1st, 2016. A yes vote will be to approve that and no vote will be to defeat that.
Shall I call the roll?
Please.
Ms. Sharkey?
Yes.
Mr. Holden?
No.
Mr. Gill?
No.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
No.
Mr. Scarmel?
Yes, the vote is three to three and thus it fails. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business and review of policy language from Mr. Woods and policy for homeless children. I believe all of that is in the Policy Subcommittee at this stage.
Yeah, I won't take up any more of your time. Thank you. I'll be very brief. Do you have in your, in your, you have in your possession the final revision? I know we started this back in, seems like forever ago, but it took some time to get it through our liaison for.
They have it.
You have it?
Yeah, they have it also.
So it's just, Jean Hurdle has given her, her blessing to it and she's looked at it and she approves it. This would substitute, just so you know, this would substitute an awful lot of the policies that are in existence right now, consolidate them to the one discrimination, harassment, sexual harassment policy and take out a lot of those other policies that have sort of been written over the years, consolidates.
Yes.
Is that going to go through our legal as well?
It's gone through.
It's gone through legal.
Everything is all set.
Jean Hurdle has seen it and so has our attorney.
And as soon as we set up that meeting, I'll try and get Jean Hurdle to phone call in again.
Any questions or comments on those? Next is public comment. Any public comment, Ms. Chavez?
I just have a few things. After listening now to Mr. Corlby and Mr. Herdley and in two weeks, I suppose, it's going to be Ms. Pearson.
Yes.
I'm just asking if it's possible that the action plans can be posted on the website for the parents to see, so the parents that are truly interested can see whether the action plans are really being implemented or not. It's just a request. I saw the business manager item on and I guess my question would be, is the source of funds for that? Also, and I'm sorry, Mr. Holden, I should have brought this up at the Athletics Subcommittee meeting and I completely forgot about it. I just want to know where we stand with coach evaluations.
I'm sorry, we can't answer questions?
I'm not, I'm not asking him to answer. I said, I forgot to bring it up and I'm just asking, where do we stand? He does not have to answer me tonight.
Okay.
I just want to know where we stand.
I'll put it on the next item.
Fine, thank you. I completely forgot about it, I'm sorry. And also, you mentioned a basketball fundraiser. Could we know what the fundraiser is? And this that was discussed tonight, this is just to implement the project, not to hire a person. This is not, am I, am I reading this wrong?
No.
This is not a person. This is to get everything into the computer.
Correct.
For the, our custodians to know whom to call.
Right.
Okay. What ser-, I'm sorry. Who, what services are needed at whatever time?
Thank you, Ms. Chavez. Any other public comment?
Mr. Chairman? Did you want to just say what that, a fundraiser?
I can give Ms. Chavez a copy of it if she wants.
Okay. I don't know why you can't say it on TV. Is it, is it a big secret?
No, it's not a secret at all, Ms. Chavez. I just said I would give you a copy of it if you ask for it.
I just thought the public would like to know.
Okay.
Do you want it back, Mr. Chairman?
If you would, if you want to read it, Mrs. Sharkey, sure.
Yeah, I'll, I'll read it. I'll just, all right. The, this is from Ignacio Ayola. We would like to host a youth basketball clinic at the Winter Bicycle Gym on Monday, the 16th of November to Wednesday, the 18th of November from 6:00 to 8:30. The instructors, instructors of the clinic will be juniors and seniors that played varsity last season. We are opening the clinic to all boys and girls from the third grade to the seventh grade for a cost of $40 for the three days. All proceeds will go to our team account. The third, fourth, and fifth graders will participate from 6:00 to 17, 7:15, and the sixth and seventh graders will go from 7:15 to 8:30. T-shirts will be given out to all registrants for their participation. Thank you, respectfully. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Next is public relations, Ms. Owen?
I have nothing tonight.
Mr. Gill?
Yeah, Mr. Masuro, I, we're in the 11th hour, not really going to speak. On the parking at the coming school tomorrow, yeah, the coming school tomorrow, it's a big issue and it has been in the past and it would have been nice if I had thought sooner, but is there some way we can alert staff that's going to be here?
Already been done.
Okay, great.
We're all parking over here tomorrow.
Perfect. So if they get towed at 9 o'clock, they'll understand.
Just, but, but what people have to realize, I'm sorry if this is, if I'm, is that a lot of the employees who go over there to work the poles also park in those slots.
No, I know.
So last year we got scolded a lot and a lot of them happened to be folks that were working there for that, so we just have to.
But if we could just remind the staff that's here.
Yes, we did.
But even at the beginning of the meeting, if we could remind them, because last year it was a big issue.
But, but we're here the whole day this year.
Right.
Whereas last year they ended up walking over and that caused some issues, so.
I don't think it, even if they, just before the meeting started, if you said, remember, go move your car. Thank you.
Mr. Holden?
I'm good, thank you.
Perrin?
Just the senior class is having a fundraiser with Mike's Pastry. The orders have to be placed by November 13th and the pickup will be November 24th. There's a delivery available in town for $2, a $2 fee. The flyers are all over town with the menu of what's available, so make sure people know that.
They're $10 each and $15 for ricotta.
But the ricotta's worth the extra $5, to be honest.
Mrs. Sharkey?
Yes. We're going to be performing holes at the Winter Bicycle Drama Play November 12th, 13th, and 14th. The class of 2017 are putting on their annual country fair on Thursday, the 12th, at 7:00 PM. It's $5 at the door. There are door prizes, raffles, and split the pot. And if I can ask as many community members to attend, it is, first of all, their greatest fundraiser is the annual country fair for each particular class. And there's wonderful prizes and there's wonderful raffles and I can only say as a long, long ago, a class advisor, these women and children put in a tremendous amount of work to make this happen. And father gives the gym and it's just a wonderful community activity. Also, the Zonta Club of Chelsea is having a fundraiser comedy night featuring Lenny Clark. It's at. It's at Prince Pizza, and it's Friday, November 6. It's $30 at the door, and it opens at 7:00 PM. And all that are interested can call 781-322-7430. And for your pies, Mr. Perrin did not give the number, is his wife, is 617-642-0017. And they're great pies because they come from Mike's Pastry.
Just wanted to, on the Zonta Club, one of the reasons why we announced that is because every year, the Zonta Club gives us gift certificates to the Market Basket and or Stop &amp; Shop for folks that are in need. And it's for during the Thanksgiving season as well as the holiday season, so.
And I thank them.
Thank you.
We thank them.
The chair anticipates going into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have detrimental effects on the bargaining or litigating positions of the public party and the chair so declared, and the chair does so declare, make a motion to go into executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Holden. Questions or comments on that? We will vote. Ms. Haynes, would you call the roll?
Ms. Sharkey?
Yes.
Mr. Holden?
Yes.
Mr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
Mr. Scarmel?
Yes. I anticipate that after the session ends, we will adjourn the public session, but that no other business other than the adjournment of the public session will occur. Thank you.